All right, welcome everyone. It is 6:30 on the evening of June 17th. This is a regular council meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. I'll call a meeting to order and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome again, everyone. We'll have our rule call of members, council members. Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
Councilmember Shevsky.
Here.
Four councilmembers here. Councilmember Cowell will not be able to join us this evening. Also at the table is, on my left, City Minister Pat Melvin, on my right, City Attorney Ross Arnison. We have with us in the audience Shannon Sweeney, representing David Drowne Associates, Jennifer Nessie, representing the Planning and Zoning Committee, Jeanie Beerson, who has an item on the agenda this evening. And then we have a gentleman by the name of Lane, who is representing the auditing firm. Lane, your last name?
Kockelmann.
Spell it, please. Okay, thank you. And then also, Michael Kedrowski. Michael is an intern with Amy Newsom at our office in Gaylord, and he's here observing this evening. And then, as always, Kurt Mink, representing the enterprise. I think I've got everyone. All right, with introductions out of the way, there is one addition to the agenda, and that is Item D under number seven, so 7D, and that is a 2019 general obligation bond presentation by Shannon Sweeney. Are there any other additions, changes in the agenda?
Can we remove 14?
Remove 14. Yes, we can either remove it or wait until a time and we'll table it, but let's remove it completely and have all our discussion the next time around. Let the minutes read. The Chief Pedersen has arrived, as Amy Berger.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions and subtractions.
Second it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to approve the agenda with the changes noted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. This evening consists of the following items. Item A, approval of the May 20th, 2019 council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the June 3rd, 2019 council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the bills. Item D, approve two, one to four day temporary on sale liquor licenses for the Sibley County Agricultural Association for the county fair July 31st, and then August 1st and 2nd, and August 3rd and 4th. And then Item E, approve temporary on sale liquor license, one to four days, for Sibley County Agricultural Association Bull Riding fundraiser on September 6th and 7th. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Shevsky, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carried. Item five, addressing the council. Does anyone wish to address the council on a non-agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we move on to announcements.
First item that we have, council members, is the Arlington Summer Reading Program, which is scheduled for June 10th through July 19th at the Arlington Library. They've got a number of different events scheduled pertaining to kids and pertaining to stories of the universe. So, please visit the website to see more information about that. Second item, today is the first day of the Arlington Farmers Market, so hopefully we've had an opportunity to stop out in the parking lot here at the Arlington Community Center. They'll be selling goods from 4:00 to 6:30. That will occur on Monday evenings throughout the summer, June 17th through the 23rd. Many wonderful things to choose from. We have a community foundation meeting planned for June 19th, part of the Sibley County Community Development. They're working on a program with the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. This will be on Wednesday, June 19th at 6:00 PM in the Sibley County Commissioners' Room at the Courthouse in Gaylord. Moving on to the next item, the city of Arlington has a cleanup day scheduled for June 20th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM in partnership with the Tri-County Waste. They accept a number of different items, tires, mattresses, appliances, large appliances, keyboards, mouse, cellphones, printers, stereos, VCRs, computer towers, hard drives, TVs, available metal, scrap metal. Some of those items do come with a cost associated with them, so please look up and see if you can find the specific item and how much they are charging for that event. With any questions, you are certainly more than welcome to contact the city offices here. They'll also have some grass clipping, small brush compost, and also some hazardous items, hazardous waste items that can be collected. So, contact the city at (507) 964-2378 with any questions on that. Moving on, we're also looking at MMPA's annual summer meeting with city officials, which will be July 23rd at 5:30 at the Chaska Event Center. Councilmembers should have received an invite for that event. I noticed I just missed the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference. That is coming up June 26th through 28th. If any councilmembers are interested, please reach out to administration. We'd be happy to set that registration up. Item G, I will be asking for some input later in the committee, under the committee updates, noting that we do have a conflict between Ben Winchester's presentation on July 23rd and MMPA's annual summer meeting. Moving on to the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association, having an annual conference, August 19th through the 21st at Breezy Point Resort. Reason this is on the agenda is hoping that you can get your early registration in by July 26th. Simply let administration know that you're interested and we'd be happy to get you registered. Last, we have the Leading Sibley Together Program. They're recruiting participants for the upcoming leadership program, 2019 through 2020. We've had a few employees from the city of Arlington go through that program. It is wonderful in terms of establishing networking as well as learning about some of the different training programs that are offered through the University of Minnesota Extension. Anybody who's interested should submit their application by August 9th.
Okay, any questions on the announcements? Hearing none, move on to communications.
First item that we have for your review is the People Services Report for April. As you can see, the People Services is doing a lot of ongoing operations, maintenance, changing out meters, and performing a lot of routine things. If you look at the page that has the charts, you can see for the month of April, in terms of the average daily water that is being pumped, we're down slightly from 2018. If you look at the average daily wastewater being pumped, you can see we're up significantly from where we were in 2018. That is as a result of significant rainfalls. And then unfortunately, we do have some infiltration, which is water from our stormwater that at times may be getting into the sewer line. So, there is a group of people who are taking a look at that. We do receive wastewater from, or sewer water from Green Isle. There is a group that will be taking a look at that closer as we go forward, so. The last thing that I would just like to call your attention to is if you look at the next page, which has the maximum daily water pumped, you can see that in March of 2019, we're at 272,000 gallons. April of 18, we're also at 272,000 gallons. But if you look at April of 2019, we bounced all the way up to 658,000 gallons. That is a result of the fact that People Services did hydrant flushing. And the city has over 100 hydrants, and typically what they do is they go around and they open them up and let them run for a little while until they can get the sediment and the dirty water out of the hydrants. So, that explains the discrepancy in numbers. Any questions on the People Services Report? Then moving on to the next item, which is the May Building Permit Report. As you can see, we've had quite a bump up in terms of building in Arlington. Looking at the May report, total value of building is $457,400. We have two new homes that are being built. We've got several permits that were pulled for fences. Of the total number of building permits, three were for commercial buildings, two re-roofings, one demolition. We also had a garage door, garage addition, deck, window installation, reciting, some of those different items. But it's apparent that people are looking at building, and I'm very happy to say that Arlington has two new homes in the process of being built. So, it's a significant accomplishment for Arlington. Are there any questions on the building permits?
All right, next item on communications is 2018 financial audit. Mr. Kockelmann, would you want to come forward?
Before Lane gets started, if anybody wants, I've got a box with some hard copies of the...
Yes.
That I will hand out.
Just make sure that mic is on. I believe I pushed the button there or whatever.
We'll hear you now.
Perfect.
Anybody else?
Did you guys want one?
I'll take one.
Yes, Ben would like one too.
Ben too.
Okay.
And if you have another one, I'll take a set also.
Keep it coming.
You want another one?
Oh.
You're handing them down, I see.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I might as well too. Do you want that?
I do.
All right. Well, thanks for having me. My name is Lane. I am with Abduwakay Myers. I've been at the firm for a little, for eight years now. So, I've been on this audit on and off over the past few years. So, you'll get to hear from me tonight. So, what we'll do is, there's going to be three things that you guys were handed. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint presentation, which is going to look like this. So, kind of what we do is try to put together a high-level overview summary and try to keep it in layman's terms. So, it's basically information that's taken from the audit reports and compiled into here for a little more simplicity. Does anybody have any questions for me to get started? Okay. So, if we go through the PowerPoint here, page two, we'll just kind of show a little introduction of what we'll go through, is we'll start with our audit opinion, our responsibility versus your guys' responsibility as city council. We'll look at the general fund, some of the other governmental funds that you guys have, the enterprise funds, and then some related ratios that are relevant to your guys' operations. So, as we said, we'll go through our opinion. So, we gave, it's not a clean opinion on the financial statements. It's going to be a qualified opinion simply for the fact that you guys didn't implement an accounting standard related to some pensions with the fire relief a few years back. That's the same opinion that you guys have the past few years. There's really no detriment to this at the moment. Bond rating companies are aware of it. The state auditor does recommend you guys implement that. There's additional costs associated with it to pay for an actuary to get this done and completed. So, that's the rationale of why that hasn't been done. So, again, it is a qualified opinion on the financial statement, so it's not a clean opinion for reporting purposes. But that's the opinion that we gave for the 2018 audit. Through his various compliance matters that the Office of the State Auditor puts out, and we don't have any compliance findings to report for the 2018 audit. Okay, and one other thing that kind of I want to mention too is I don't know if there's any new councilmembers this year, but our responsibility as auditors, we're not engaged to look for fraud. That's not the purpose of an audit. Our purpose of an audit is to provide that opinion on the financial statements themselves. We do have tests in place that look for items that may seem odd, and we are required to report it if we come across it. But that is not the objective of the audit. So, it is important to recognize that, is the financial statements themselves are ultimately, the responsibility is you guys as a city council, and our responsibility as auditors is to opine on those financial statements. If you want to go to page four, we did have one finding in 2018 as well. It's the same finding we had in 2017 and other years past, which is internal control finding, a segregation of duties. So, basically, what that is saying is that the size of the staff of, in the office, is too small or limited. And that's something that you guys will, from a cost-benefit standpoint, has decided is an acceptable risk. It's very common in a city your size. Again, just with Lisa basically being involved in too many of the operations of the city, we put that in there, that there's a segregation of duties of overlapping controls, that duties that she performs.
Could I ask you to speak just a little louder? Pull the microphone a little closer, please.
Is that better?
Better.
Better?
Yell at me.
I won't yell, but I will try to speak up a little bit.
I do.
Okay. Page five, so there's a prior year finding as well, that this is a finding from 2017 that was remedied in the current year. There's an inventory reconciliation that was not performed for the 2017 audit that was done for the 2018 audit, the first week of January in 2019. Page six, we'll look at the general fund and the fund balances the last five years. So, a good measure of liquidity, or where you guys' fund balance are at, is to look at the unassigned fund balance of the cities, with dollars that are available for spending at the city's discretion, and compare that to next year's budget expenditures. So, typically, the city's been around that 1.4 million to about 1.5 million in budgeted expenditures. And you have a fund balance policy to maintain a 40% of those expenditures in reserves. So, that blue line there is going to be where you've actually been at. So, 14, 15, and 16, there were reserves of right about 60%, a little over 60%, which is well above that 40% policy that you guys have. Now, it has jumped up the last couple of years. We'll look at that jump from 17 to 18 here in this next slide. But that has been increasing. We as auditors would recommend anywhere from 35 to 50% of expenditures, and League of Minnesota Cities recommends that as well. So, something to consider, you guys' policy is 40% that, what to do with those dollars, whether it's transferring them out, and again, you'll see that in this next slide. But always something to consider. So, if we look at 2018, the snapshot here, your final budgeted amounts, if you look at revenues and expenditures, were about 1.4 and a half million in revenues compared to 1.1 million in expenditures. And then there's also some transfers in and transfers out to various other funds. So, that net change in fund balance, if you hear the term balanced budget, that's kind of what we'd be looking at. So, essentially, there's a $300 increase. It was more or less a balanced budget for 2018. In the middle column is where you came in, your actual results. So, if we look at revenues, revenues were over budget, so a positive budget variance of about $30,000. About $15,000 of this was related to some various state aids that came in that were mainly not anticipated. The city did give some street maintenance dollars, or the state gave some street maintenance dollars during the year. That was about $10,000. And then a big area too is donations, which typically are unbudgeted. And that ended up being about $15,000 that came in. So, if we look at expenditures, the next line item there, that was also a positive budget variances. So, expenditures were under budget by about $11,000. The main two areas there is going to be public works and culture and rec. Public works was under budget by about $20,000 for various reasons, mostly due to staffing and fuel costs. Snow removal is also a big one, just kind of depends on how mild or how harsh the winters are. And then culture and rec ended up being about $15,000 over budget. So, I think a lot of that had to do with the library staffing and kind of the costs associated with the county as well. So, if you have anything to add to, Pat, along the way, feel free to jump in at any time. And then another area too is the transfers out ended up being under budget by about $70,000. We'll talk a little bit about that later. That's more so due to drawing down some reserves. So, overall, if you look at the net change in fund balance, that middle column, that increased about $100,000 during the year. So, your ending fund balance and general fund is about 1.1 million compared to about that one and a half million dollars of expenditures that are budgeted for 2019. Any questions on that? Next slide, I don't have a whole lot to add here other than if you look at where your taxes and where your intergovernmental revenues are at. Those make up about 95% of your general fund revenues. The intergovernmental is typically going to be flat. There are some LGA changes. I think that got approved by legislature that will bump that up a little bit. But typically, as expenditures increase in the general fund, it's going to be that tax levy that increases to offset those increase in costs typically. The other is going to be sort of your kind of catch-all. Ends up being less than $100,000 during the year. That's going to be your donations, licenses, and permits, kind of that sort of thing. Okay. Next slide, same thing. I will look at kind of departmental-wise on where costs have been at the last three years. Typically, this is going to be a lot of inflationary increases. There were some peaks and valleys here for various reasons. General government in 2017, a lot of that is due to the turnover in the administrative position and some one-time costs related to that. And then public safety, there were shortages of officers in 2017. You can see that dip there. And then streets and highways, again, is going to be kind of, when you're public works, related to the street maintenance that's going on, snow removal, kind of that sort of thing. And then trans results have been decreasing the last three years as well. Any questions on that?
What's the other there?
The other is going to be kind of a catch-all. So, culture and recreation would be included in there. I think there's a miscellaneous kind of contingency one. I would imagine that the most of that and that other is going to be culture and rec. And that was just, we do combine some of the other immaterial ones just because the graph gets a little busy otherwise. But that would be my guess is the culture and rec is the main driver of that.
Thanks.
Next slide is going to be your capital project fund balances. So, there's five capital project funds that you guys have active. I'll touch on a couple of the major ones. The capital equipment is kind of the main operating fund that you guys use to, use for your capital purchases. So, kind of what happens, there's some dollars that are transferred in. About $145,000 in 2018 came into that fund from the general fund. $70,000 came in from the medical center lease fund to make those purchases. And then there's about $350,000 in capital purchases in that fund during the year. So, you do have fund balance in that fund available for capital purchases, which was drawn down by about $90,000 during the year. And then the 2017 improvement fund, there were some project costs during the year on that. So, that fund, when that project's completed, can be closed. And the Circle Drive improvements, there's a fund balance deficit in there. That was a project that was not bonded for, so you paid for the project costs upfront. And there's special assessments that are being collected to pay for that project. And then 2019 street improvement project has some preliminary costs in there during the year that will be bonded for in 2019. So, the main thing I want to point out, that bottom graph, there's a lot of those dollars in these funds are going to be available kind of at your discretion, mostly for those equipment purchases in that capital equipment fund. Okay. Same thing here, this is your special revenue funds, which are, if you look at that bottom graph, are going to be restricted for specific purposes. So, these are dollars that are maybe not necessarily available at your discretion, but they're set aside for specific reasons. So, again, I'll touch on not all of them, but just some of the major ones. You know, the ambulance had a little bit of decrease in fund balance during the year. There's about $250,000 in revenues compared to about $272,000 in expenditures, and that's mainly just going to do to runs during the year, which are always going to be hard to predict. And then the fire fund as well had a decrease. The main reason for that is that the general fund, I believe the general fund was going to transfer another $45,000 that was opted not to be made. The general fund did transfer in some dollars, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, but I believe that there's available fund balance, and that was kind of the design of that, is that there was that $145,000 and the city opted to use some of that fund balance during the year out of that fund to pay for their operations out of there.
Correct. Yep. We took a look and we saw that they were doing quite well.
Yep.
We moved down a little bit in that number.
Yep. And then the community hall, that one decreased about $14,000, $15,000, and that was kind of some one-time capital purchases that were made, capital expenditures that weren't budgeted for, that came up during the year. That ended up decreasing that fund balance to a little under $10,000 during the year. And some of your other major funds in there are going to be your EDA loan, revolving loans, small cities loan program. Again, those dollars are going to be restricted for loans. You can't use that to buy a squad car or anything like that. It's set aside for specifically a loan out. Next slide. If you want to go back one, Pat?
You jumped around.
That's all right.
There we go.
I don't have a whole lot to add here, other than that you guys do have some debt that is dropping off in 2020. So, if you look at that bottom chart there, there are some bonds that are maturing in 2019. The 2008 equipment certificates are maturing, and the community center bond is maturing as well. And there's also another bond that is dropping off in 2020. So, it's always good to look at the cash flows on where the debt is and when you have dollars that are dropping off to kind of smooth those levies out, avoid some of those levy spikes to take on projects when some of the current debt is dropping off.
Just for the council, basically, the debt that is dropping off will be reissued with the 2018 street improvement project.
True.
So, the bar will be...
Yep. So, if you look at all the funds in total, there's about $872,000 in cash, and then there's another $3.1 million in assets. And the majority of that's going to be special assessments. And then there's also, the hospital bond fund is just an in-and-out. Dollars come in to pay the bond, and then they get paid out by the city for the debt payments. So, the next ones are going to be the enterprise funds. So, this can be your water, your sewer, electric. Kind of look at where your operations are at. So, kind of a quick overview of this is you want these funds to be self-sufficient. You want the users of these costs to be paying or collecting the revenue to pay for them. So, if you look at the top graph, ideally, you are going to want your blue bar, which is going to be your operating receipts, to exceed the gray, which is your operating disbursements plus your debt payments, which are in the green. So, any excess of that is going to be good, and that's... Uh, so any excess of that, uh, is gonna be good, and that's basically setting dollars aside for future capital purchases. Um, so you can see that the water fund has been operating fairly consistent over the last four years and is generating positive cash flows. And if you look at the bottom graph, uh, you can see that accordingly, the green bar is gonna be where your total cash is in that fund. So in twenty eighteen, cash is just a little over seven hundred thousand dollars, which has increased from, you know, about doubled for, from four years ago. Um, so that, that top graph is growing those cash balances in the bottom. Um, our recommendation as auditors, uh, for enterprise funds would be to set aside one year, um, worth of debt payments, the following year debt payments. And then fifty percent of operating costs. So that's what that blue line graph, um, on that bottom graph represents. Uh, so again, anything in the green above that blue line on the bottom is kind of what you have available for, for capital, um, for one-time purchases outside of the operations. Uh, so the water fund is doing, doing pretty well, um, collecting those, those dollars. If you look at the sewer fund, uh, it's a, not doing quite as well. And you can see accordingly, the cash balances have been, have dropped from twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. Um, there has been some debt that's dropped off as well, so that has improved kind of where that minimum cash balance would be at. Um, so operations have improved that over the last four years. Um, where you're, pretty much have been right out where that minimum recommended target cash balance, um, where we would recommend. So it, uh, as enterprise funds, you'll always review, consider rates annually, um, on how, how they're doing. I know that, you just hearing earlier with Pat, looking at some of the, the usage and that sort of things. Um, again, just something always to consider that, that these are being self-sustained. Okay. Next page is gonna be the electric fund. Uh, you can see, if you look at that top graph again, is that your blue bar, which is your operating receipts have stayed pretty consistent. Um, but your gray, which is gonna be the operating costs, have been increasing a little bit. And consequently, the cash balances have been decreasing in that fund. So you're looking at a little over a million dollars in that fund in twenty sixteen, and that has dropped to about six hundred thousand dollars in twenty eighteen. Uh, so that is a little bit below where we would recommend that, that cash balance would be, which is about nine hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, so again, uh, as you consider rates and looking at that and, and where that's being generated, um, always something to consider. So the one thing that isn't reflected in this is that the capital purchases are gonna be the ones that draw down your cash. Uh, so that's also, um, drawing down those cash balances in that bottom graph.
In this, we did do an electrical rate study in two thousand eighteen, so we have made an adjustment, um, for two thousand nineteen going forward. That will hopefully bring us back in line with what you've identified as the, the target balance, balance that we need to see.
And the last one here is gonna be the stormwater fund. Um, again, same kind of thing that's going on, the, the receipts have been, have increased, uh, in twenty eighteen. And consequently, you can see where that cash has jumped up to. Uh, so a little under where your, um, where we'd recommend, but I would suspect that that's, you know, heading in the right direction, and that would be remedied. Um, or improved as it, as operations keep going forward. Any questions on the enterprise funds?
What's gonna happen when we take on this new project? Cause I'm assuming this is all last year's numbers.
Correct. Um.
So what, what are the graphs gonna look like at, at that point?
It will, yep, it will change. Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's exactly what Shannon will be talking with us about later, so I don't know if you want Shannon to.
Yeah, it, it, like I said, this is as of a year in twenty eighteen, so this won't reflect any of the twenty nineteen bond issues or anything like that. Um, Shannon could explain it much better than I could. It just kind of depends on where the bonding is and how, if it's being funded by levies, assessments, um, water, sewer, rates, um. All the above. So it would affect all of this, and basically what would happen is that the, the green, the green bar up there would, would increase. And then any rate changes that you make in twenty nineteen would also increase that blue bar. Um, and also increase that kind of minimum target cash balance where we would recommend, uh, specifically for those enterprise funds.
So is there a way that after we come up with what we're gonna do, that we can like forecast what this is gonna look like?
Probably could.
That would be nice to have.
Yeah, and if Pat wants to work with that, or work with us on that, or Shannon, I mean, any of us could, could help what that looks like. Okay. Alright. Uh, so we kind of talked about all the funds that the city has. So overall, uh, here's kind of where your total cash balances are at the last three years. Um, it's typically right around that five million dollar range, um, and has stayed pretty, pretty consistent. It was a little bit of jump up in twenty seventeen. Um, but there were some, some capital, major capital purchases the city made in twenty eighteen, um, so that has been right about a little over five million dollars total. Okay. Another thing where we'll look at, um, is just various ratios. So we'll put together, um, some peer group averages. So in all of these, these next few graphs, um, the blue bar is gonna be where the city Arlington is. And the gray bar is going to be cities in Sibley County. And, um, the green bar is gonna be class four cities, which are all the cities in the state that are under ten thousand in population. Um, excluding some of the really small ones that are cash basis. Uh, so if you look at where your tax rate is, um, it's a little bit higher than cities your size. Um, but overall, that second graph at the bottom, your taxes per capita are also a little bit lower than both the cities your size and cities in Sibley County. Uh, so that's kind of one thing that, that we'll look at is, you know, kind of where your taxes per capita are at, and that's, you know, what each citizen is paying, um, on a per-tax basis. Next slide, uh, is gonna kind of look at debt and, um, at the same time, this is gonna include all the debt that the city has. So you do have a little bit more debt than both cities your size and cities in the county. Uh, and that just kind of depends on what projects the city has going on, um, you know, how old some of your infrastructure is, kind of that sort of thing. So that is gonna vary, um, vary yearly, or vary on a, on a per-city basis. Um, and then your debt service expenditures, uh, that's gonna be a little bit increased, a little bit higher if you're gonna have more debt. Uh, so I don't really have anything else to add on that. Next slide, page twenty. Um, again, the blue bar here is going to be like where your expenditures are compared to other cities. So, I mean, right in line, I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary there. Um, and then your capital expenditures, again, we kind of talked about some of the timing of those projects, the last couple of years. Um, the city has been spending some dollars on some, some capital projects these last couple of years. You can see that by that blue bar. And then the next slide, page twenty-one, kind of the same thing. Uh, we'll look at, uh, where you're at, um, on a per-department basis. And, you know, where your taxes are at. So again, that bottom one, um, the bottom graph is gonna show you where your taxes are. So i- i- your taxes are a little bit lower than, um, than your peers. Uh, and then your charges for services are a little bit higher, but overall than that, everything else is, is pretty much, pretty much right in line. And then expenditures too, again, overall, everything is, is pretty consistent. Culture and rec's one that, um, is gonna vary too. Um, again, various cities have different items. Some have pools, some have golf courses, that all kind of gets lumped into that culture and rec. Um, and then public safety ended up being a little bit higher than some of your peers as well. But a lot of this is more so kind of for informational, on informational basis to see how you stack up versus, um, cities in the area and other cities throughout the state that are comparable to. Um, I don't, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on these, um, cause we already talked about kind of the enterprise funds operation. So, uh, your debt service coverage, typically, you recommend anything above one hundred percent or just, you know, that's the goal, is to have anything over a hundred percent. And I think both the water and sewer are well above that. Um, and the electric fund, I had something much weird there, so I'm not gonna add anything on that one. So, um, I think that is all I have, unless anybody else has any questions for me while I'm here.
Anyone? Alright, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Appreciate you.
I guess a quick question for you, since, since you've been involved. Um, overall, what is a good number for us to take a look at in terms of how well we're performing overall?
Typically, what I recommend is looking at the general fund, the general fund operations and looking at that unassigned fund balance. Um, and seeing where you're at there, and you guys are, have been growing that these past few years. Um, and we'd also recommend, you know, setting some of those dollars aside, whether it's by council action or, um, assigning some of those dollars. Not to have that unassigned fund balance be too high. Uh, basically say that, you know, we have these dollars available, but we wanted earmarked them for specific purposes. Whether it being transferring them out to a capital improvement fund or various other items that the city may need. Um, so the general fund's a big one, and then your enterprise funds, um, looking at the operations of that, seeing how, you know, where your usage is, where your rates are, um, how that's cash flowing as well. So that's typically the biggest areas, um, that I would recommend looking at, the general fund and the enterprise fund.
And, I mean, we're looking at two thousand eighteen, so we're looking, you know, a year back, and we've got things, spending scheduled for this year.
Yep.
Um. There can be quite a bit of change with, over the course of one year, depending on how aggressive the council is with, with spending and everything.
Yeah, and I think that's something that's important too, is to always consider is, um, looking at budgeted taxual reports throughout the year and seeing, you know, are we in line? Whether it's in collections for the enterprise funds, you know, where are our costs sitting? You know, at six months into the year, are we about halfway through? You know, it's, it's gonna vary too, depending on the time of the years. But, um, uh, just something to be aware of as you look at those budgeted taxual reports is to get relevant and accurate information. And just monitor that on a, on a monthly basis, um, to always look at that to see, you know, what's, was there a one-time cost that's kind of throwing our budget off? Do we need to make a budget amendment or consider this, kind of that sort of thing? Uh, cause yeah, like you said, you know, we are halfway through twenty nineteen already, so this, the audit is always in the past. Um, and to always consider, you know, forecasting for the, for the future, especially as you get into planning for twenty nineteen budget, kind of that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out to myself, Aaron Tom, um, happy to get back to you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is, uh, Shannon Sweetie. Shannon rolled in to the meeting tonight.
You need help getting up there?
Pretty good at it.
You got a license for that thing?
Uh, not yet. I, uh, this is officially the, uh, broken a twenty-six year streak of not wearing shorts to council meetings, so. That's unfortunate. Good evening, mayor members of the council. Shannon Sweetie with David Brown Associates. Uh, we have some material to discuss with regard to initiating the process for putting financing in place for our two thousand nineteen street utility reconstruction project. This follows conversations that we've been having for quite a number of months with regard to this project. Uh, which you've, uh, continued to manage even post-bidding, uh, to reduce or eliminate some costs associated with that project. So what we built in are the final costs based on, uh, the value engineering and the removal of a sidewalk for that proposed project. Uh, we have total costs for the two thousand nineteen street utility reconstruction of two point seven million, just over that. We have a fire truck purchase that we're including at this time because ultimately, we can combine that borrowing for very little or almost no issuance expense associated with that transaction and take advantage of some pretty good interest rates. Uh, we then have fiscal, legal, underwriting and a credit rating, which Pat just received a good primer on the questions he's gonna be asked. Cause they're very similar to what your auditor just went through with regard to his PowerPoint presentation. So, uh, your credit rating agency is gonna ask very similar questions about unassigned fund balances that are available to meet obligations and cash reserves and all those kinds of things, so, uh, it was a good exercise. Uh, at the end of the day, we're looking to borrow two million nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, for fire truck purchase and the two thousand nineteen street utility reconstruction project. Uh, we've structured that in a similar manner as we've discussed for quite some time over a twenty-year term. Uh, sources of repayment include tax levy for, uh, essentially street portions of the project cost along with the fire truck. Uh, we have sanitary sewer revenues, water revenues, storm sewer revenues and special assessments rounding out our sources of repayment. Uh, this schedule is assuming that five hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars in special assessments will be certified over a twenty-year term at a five percent interest rate against benefited properties. That will generate approximately forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars per year in revenue that will be applied to this debt service. We'll have a bond issue, or a, a tax levy that is initially seventy-two thousand dollars per year, cause that's paying for both the fire truck and this project. And as, you know, we just discussed during that audit process, ultimately, we have multiple pieces of debt that are dropping off this year and next year that will more than offset the projected levy for this project. So this project in and of itself won't result in additional increase to the levy. You know, as you set your budget for twenty twenty, you know, there may be other needs in the city that have that impact. But ultimately, you know, it's been our thought and our discussion for a number of months now that the retirement of the debt on this facility and some equipment certificates is gonna be replaced by this project that was proposed, along with fire truck. So. With regard to water and sanitary sewer rates, you saw a very good, you know, graph presented by your auditor that showed that you have some cash that is being produced by both of those enterprises. And, you know, what I've suggested in, in my review last year and this year, and was basically reaffirmed by the eighteen audit is that I don't know that immediate, I'm not recommending that immediate rate increases be made in either utility because I think there's capacity there to make these debt service payments. And I think we have, one, available cash to survive any minor blips. And two, uh, they've been producing sufficient surplus cash that I think they can accommodate these debt payments for now. You know, going forward, more so on sanitary sewer than water, uh, there might be, you know, some need to make some more modest increases based on inflationary increases in operating costs. But at the end of the day, I didn't think there was any, I didn't have any immediate recommendations for water or sanitary sewer rate increases. Uh, the, the, the place where we, we don't have capacity, we don't have a lot of surplus cash, and what we've talked about over the past year is in storm sewer. Um, at the end of the day, we're needing to collect, and, and this project has a lot of storm sewer expense associated with it. You know, approximately sixty-one thousand dollars per year of the debt service. You know, debt service total is, you know, once we pay off the fire truck, about a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars a year. So about a third of our debt service is attributed to storm sewer. And that's a newer utility. Uh, we've tried to phase it in as slowly as we can, you know, and not whack people over the head with a big rate increase. But ultimately, we're getting to the part, point where we have significant needs in that utility for reconstruction activity. And so, you know, we're estimating about a seven dollar per month fee increase for a residential customer. Um, and that's the area where we do, uh, you know, have an increase as, as a result of this project. Uh, I have structured this with borrowing initial interest payments to give us some time to implement those rate increases. Sometime meaning, you know, by the end of this year, uh, so you don't have to do it tonight or tomorrow. But, uh, we have to be thoughtful and decide how we wanna accommodate that, that need. Um, and so if you have any questions or thoughts, I'm happy to discuss alternatives on that particular piece of, of the debt. But ultimately, it's, it's a big storm sewer need, and at the end of the day, we try to accommodate each of our enterprises by paying for themselves. And so that's our initial approach anyway. Uh, you know, we looked at other alternatives. As we talk about this, rural development is becoming more popular. It's a federal agency that funds large utility reconstruction activity in communities. Um, I don't believe you're to the point where you'd be grant eligible with rural development yet. And if you're not grant eligible, rural development's no fun to work with. And so, and so we didn't have a recommendation along those lines. But, uh, uh, again, we're twenty- again, we're twenty-year term on the debt. We have it prepayment-eligible as of February first of twenty-seven. So we have call protection, meaning we can't prepay this debt for a little while. We do that because it impacts the interest rate. If we were to shorten that period of time on which we can prepay folks, the investment community would charge us a bit higher interest rate. And so we didn't think that was worth it at this point, unless you tell me otherwise, that we wanna shorten that prepayment provision. It's very standard to have something about this duration. I would say that eighty percent of the stuff I work on has a call provision that's about this term, about eight years. We are proposing that we sell bonds using a competitive sale process, meaning we'll create an offering document, we'll purchase a credit rating from Standard and Poor's, we'll distribute that offering document and the credit rating to multiple folks, underwriters, they're called, that purchase bond issues for a living and resell them to private investors. Those folks will have the opportunity to bid on the purchase of this bond issue on July fifteenth. So on the morning of July fifteenth, if you decide to proceed, will be when we receive bids and we'll present them to you that evening for award. So we would then close on or about August first, and that's when funds would be available to pay project costs. So initiate sale this evening, we would have a rating agency call in the next couple of weeks where we'd obtain the credit rating. We would receive, prepare an offering document, distribute it to underwriters, receive bids on July fifteenth, present them to you that evening for award, and close on or about August first. Interest rate that I've used in my preliminary analysis is about two point seven five percent. When we were originally talking about this many months ago, we were well over three percent, three and a quarter, to three point four percent, I believe even. And so while construction costs didn't necessarily move in our favor, at this point, at least interest rates have. So in fact, this past week, I'd still be a little bit conservative at, at what I've used in this analysis, so. Yeah, so if they hold out till July fifteenth, we'll be in good shape, which they've been pretty stable, so. More than happy to answer questions, but the action that's before you this evening is a resolution that authorizes us to proceed with this plan for putting finance in place. We wouldn't lock an interest rate until July fifteenth, when we receive bids and present them to you for award. So you haven't borrowed any money until that point in time. More than happy to answer questions from the council.
So is there a way that we could take the fire truck money and use that? Assess the, the residents that are in the street project to buy the fire truck?
Uh, we're not doing that.
I don't think the residents go along with that either.
We're, we're paying off that fire truck over a little less than ten-year term. Statute only allows us to finance those types of things over a maximum of ten years. So you understand the fire truck will be paid off more briskly than twenty years, so.
Now, with the assessments, you had said twenty years for, at five percent on those that are, you know, pay over a twenty-year period.
Yes.
What happens if they pay it off early? How does that affect the whole picture?
Ultimately, if we, you know, it, it's the, it's the most interesting part of the process to manage, Mayor. It's a, we're planning on getting five percent interest on those when we create this cash flow. If we receive lots of prepayments, we're investing those at about one percent. And so it's a losing proposition when we receive, well, I shouldn't say a losing proposition, but at the end of the day, our cash flow is suffering a little bit because we're not receiving the interest that we were hoping to get by an assessment that's paid off over time. What we do do is we invest it as best we can until two thousand twenty-seven, and then we use those prepaid special assessments to prepay debt at that time. If this were heavier in special assessments, tomorrow morning, I'm issuing drainage bonds that are a hundred percent specially assessed. We would pay the price of having a shorter call date and pay higher interest, because it's all being paid by special assessments. And if we receive lots of prepayments, you know, we really need to be able to manage that debt very quickly. So it's not quite the same here, because it's, you know, a much smaller percentage of the total project costs, we should be able to figure it out, so.
Did you take into account for some prepayments, though?
Ultimately, we do be, by the interest rate that we're charging, because the interest rate on the assessments is a bit higher than what we're paying on the bonds. So that's how we accommodate it.
Can we set that interest rate at a lower number?
You can, but understand that it might have to be made up with tax levy then. What you're not collecting in special assessments, you have to pay for from either an enterprise or tax levy, so. But certainly, that's, you have that ability to do that.
When you say it's not callable until February of two thousand twenty-seven, we can't pay it all off and but can we make early payments?
No, that's the first effort.
We can't do any payments in advance?
No, no. And that's essentially standard for projects like this. Again, we can shorten that, that call protection, we call it, and we could have the opportunity to prepay more quickly. But we're gonna pay a higher interest rate overall, which adds up very quickly at three million dollars.
So in the, the auditor's report that they gave us, in our capital impro, uh, capital equipment?
Yes.
Fund, there's there's money in there, right?
Yes.
So how come we don't use that money to pay for our?
You have a capital improvement plan for which you earmarked a whole bunch of your cash, you know, variety of projects and that sort of thing. If we spend down cash significantly, it's gonna impact our credit rating, which will again cost us more interest, because our credit rating will be diminished. So if you tell me you have cash that isn't allocated, you know, my understanding is that you have a pretty extensive capital improvement plan that dedicates most of that funding. But if you wanted to dedicate it for another purpose like this project, we would wanna know that soon, so.
When you're looking at that number two, I think we're, you're looking at a five-year capital improvement plan in terms of that number. Each year, we allocate a, a portion of that to the CIP, but we try and, we have enough in there to cover us for a five-year period.
You know, and, and it's, ultimately, it's that cash that's produced a pretty good credit rating for this community. It's been double A minus in the past, which is very good for a community this size. Basically, that's due to the cash you keep in reserve, it being at a healthy level. You certainly can spend it down, but, you know, ultimately, that'll you, you, you may have to levy to replace it in the future for the capital needs that you've identified in your plan, if you're honestly gonna continue to implement those. You know, or you might pay a little bit higher interest rate on debt, so. If you had cash reserves that I considered to be absolutely terribly excessive, I would, I would tell you that. I think they're great reserves, but I don't think they're terribly excessive. You know, you're in a good position to be able to do projects, you have cash that you can take advantage of, rebates, discounts, special offers on small, medium, and even some large capital purchases by having that cash. You're in a great position to manage the city that way, so.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
I'll introduce resolution forty-one twenty nineteen, providing for the competitive negotiated sale of two point nine nine five million general obligation bonds, series twenty nineteen A.
I'll second that.
Okay, resolution forty-one dash twenty nineteen, providing for the competitive negotiated sale of two million nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars of general obligation bonds, series twenty nineteen A, was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Haddelstedt. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by rule call. Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Four voting in favor, none opposed, and one absent, the resolution has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Good work, Paul.
Good luck with your life.
You'll be on the golf course tomorrow, yeah.
No. And I hate to say it, but I'll probably still have this boot on when I see you in mid-July.
Oh, no.
Is there an ankle deal?
Yes.
Eh, my sister-in-law, the same thing.
Eight screws in a plate.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Thanks, Shannon. All right, under reports, item eight, I should say, police department update, Chief Patterson. Good evening.
I believe you were all sent the monthly update. I had a copy of that. Again, just to go through kind of the highlights on that, as I do most every time. May of two thousand eighteen, we had two hundred and fifty-nine calls. And May of two thousand nineteen, we are at four hundred and forty-one. That was with two point five officers in two thousand eighteen, and with four of us now for the two thousand nineteen. Call load, year-to-date, in two thousand eighteen, we had one thousand two calls. And year-to-date, for two thousand nineteen, we have sixteen hundred total calls. As of recently, we have got a couple things going on. We're looking at having Ross review the truancy code and trying to get that, so that we can present that to you coming up. Hopefully, the next council meeting-ish. Ross has been busy with some other things, too. He got our bail schedule implemented into the court system, so that now all of our code and ordinances can be utilized to their fullest. So that was a huge help, Ross, thank you. Along with that, we're gonna probably need to have a discussion about the bail schedules that are associated with those, and I'm not sure if they're gonna need to be updated in our city fee schedule, or if those are totally separate. So Ross and I'll discuss that, and we'll get back to you if we need to have any meeting approval that applies to that as well. Update on the trailer park, again, Ross has been busy, and we've been trying to work on the two very falling apart trailers that are in the east park. So we're working on those. We thought that there was gonna be at least one that was removed from the facility by this week, and that didn't happen. Ross has reached out to him again now, and we've actually got the foundation, there's bricks that are tipping over, I took a picture of it, Ross has sent it on to him. And potential of us issuing some citations for danger to public safety. And we're talking about also maybe doing something similar to what we requested with the pond, maybe putting some safety fencing up around that. I, I just think liability-wise, with the number of kids in that park, we're gonna need to address some issue very quickly here. So we got the trailer park. We had a meeting with the police committee and reviewed a few things. One of them was a camera system for the city hall up here and for the police department. And we think that we've got some funds that have been acquired, that won't cost the city anything. So we're gonna move forward with installing our security system. We're just gonna, James and I are gonna do that at our office. And we'll get six cameras put up, one will be on our evidence room, and then the others will be around the perimeter of the building. One of the functions or specialties, actually, two things that we're looking at trying to cover, is a exchange area, where people could either do a custody exchange and/or if they're doing online sales, and they'd feel a little bit more comfortable being in front of the police department, we can have better lit. And there'll be a video camera that's pointing out in the front as well. And then we're looking at getting the prescription bin. Been a slow process since it kind of started, but trying to get that installed in our entryway. And there'll be a camera that'll be installed on that, which will meet the requirements for the DEA prescription drop box. So along with that, we have a T Z D, towards zero deaths initiative that we're gonna be assisting with, it's statewide, it's a speed enforcement. So we're gonna be enforcing a little bit more strictly some of the speed stuff, along with our general patrol. And then just a reminder to the general public as well, we're gonna have, August first is gonna be quickly coming up with the hands-free cellphone law that's gonna be going into effect, and I'm sure we'll be doing a T Z D enforcement that goes along with that as well. And mainly, all that means is it's just a extra awareness to the public on paying attention to their speeds at that particular time, and then when we're doing the distracted driving, so. Other than that, we had some Northland drying, I just wanted to give you a little update on that. We did take the monitoring device back to the Minnesota Pollution Control, and they did a download of all the information. We've gotten that back, and we're culling through that to get everything associated to the calls and the ICRs that we had generated. Just a highlight of some of that was from April ninth to present, we had, and this is just noise complaints, is the title in our entries, so there was twenty-six complaints in that time. And we've only issued one citation, but since we had the device, the monitoring device, we've only had it for about three weeks now, we've only issued the one citation in there, and we've had probably three to four that have been over fifty, as far as the L fifty-decibel readings, which means the nighttime has, has exceeded it by, by a little bit. We have not had a whole lot of successful readings that have been above. So of those complaints that we've had, I would say the majority of them have actually been under the L fifty nighttime requirement. So we'll get a more detailed report put together on that and be able to get that information. It's mainly gonna be beneficial when we do, or if we do have to appear in court regarding the citation that was issued. And again, that's another conversation I wanna have with Ross about, are we gonna continue issuing citations for each time it's over fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three? Or are we going to wait for court to establish this first contact, and then we'll do the violations after they have been given their direction that way? So Ross and I can go on that, and we'll have a more detailed report for you and for the council. I think that pretty much covers my update, unless there's any other questions.
Oh, the smell.
Of the noise complaints, there's been a couple that have, have been mentioning some smell. I guess we haven't taken a whole lot of those. I don't know if the city has received anything more in direct communication.
You know, I, I think we've received a few emails about the smell, but nothing more.
If we need to separate our reports that we have, we can certainly add like a category to that, and if it's relative to, you know, when that I think we've had some pretty cooler weather right now over the last couple of weeks, so I don't think I don't think we've hit the prime time for smell yet.
Things aren't fermenting.
Yeah, yeah. Although I have, have kept an eye on the exterior of the property, and I have not seen any loads of potatoes being dumped outside or anything laying around that would cause that. So I would presume that anything that would be coming from the plant would be from the inside.
Okay, anything else for John?
Just have one question, Chief. When you're talking about the cameras, you said one would be outside the building, in the lighted area, if people wanted to do sales?
Well, some internet sales exchange, like, sometimes you'll hear about people buying and selling on Craigslist or Facebook. And if they want to have a safe place where they can sit and do the exchange. Oftentimes, we joke that it looks like a drug deal happening, and here it's, it's two moms that are trading, you know, two-year-old toddler clothes.
Giving them a lighted area.
Yeah, yeah, we just mean that.
Well, that's a good thing to know.
Or a parental exchange. We do have a sign that we had found that just said something along those lines, too, that we could put on a post out in front, but one of the things we could just offer as far as the public to think about.
Good deal. Thank you.
John, just a question with the Hands-Free Cell Form coming up. What's the penalty for that? And how's that going to work right off the bat? I mean, I assume that a lot of people are gonna be kind of caught by surprise.
Well, it's been publicized quite a bit.
Okay.
A lot of people are talking about it. The part they'll be caught off-guard with is probably, I'm guessing, about $120 ticket if it's their first time around. It's typically kind of where speeding or a stop sign or that type of citation would fall, but it's just a guess. I don't know what they're... what fine they're gonna have set on that yet. Maybe it's on the bail schedule. I haven't looked at it.
Could I pay you right up front? No.
Bluetooth capability will still be allowed.
I would say this device is about $39 on the internet and it's very effective, so... Yeah.
But through my truck?
Your truck will do it as well. Yep.
I can still talk through my truck.
Yes, you're just not supposed to be holding the device in your hand.
I can't hear your phone. I can't talk or text through my pickup.
Right.
I figured I could, but I was gonna check on her.
How do you know?
Anything else for the chief?
Nope, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have a planning and zoning in your report. Jennifer Nessie, representing Planning and Zoning Commission. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting sort of an annual summary of what we've been doing in planning and zoning. Can you hear me? Councilmember Highland, okay? Can you hear me okay?
I'm sorry?
No. No answers.
We appreciate the council supporting us on the major programs we've been working through. In 2019, the appointments for members included Jim Kraft, who's our chair, Jim Carlson, Janet Dino, Dwight Kriebitzky, who is our vice chair, Darnell Halverson, and myself, Jennifer Nessie. The meeting dates are summarized in the report that we provided. We meet monthly on Thursday evenings, the first Thursday of the month traditionally. We are the appointed planning agency for the City of Arlington and our role is to advise the mayor and council on issues related to land use and property subdivision. In three distinct areas, we make recommendations and pass resolutions for the council to consider. In the planning capacity area, we assist the city in establishing a vision for the community and steps to reach that vision. In the legislative area, the commission studies regulations and proposes changes as needed so that we attain a vision espoused in a comprehensive community plan. And in the regulatory capacity, we apply the ordinances and rules to specific situations in the fulfillment of the vision. Core initiatives include promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the community and various other priorities. We participate actively in implementing the comprehensive plan, which we're actually taking a look at this year to see if there are certain areas where we can focus, and I think that will be one of the areas that we're very interested in pursuing so that we're in alignment with the EDA and in alignment with the objectives that the council has asked us to perform. We look at land use and subdivision applications and process those through the help of the city inspector if needed. We have held public hearings for interim uses, variances, conditional use permits, and they're along the variety of things you'd normally see. Variances on fencing, on setbacks, for example, as well as rezoning of certain properties to accommodate growth and things that are taking place that are changing the look and feel of the community. Are there any questions? I hopefully had a chance to read through some of these. I don't need to go through them in entirety.
We had the report.
As far as ordinance amendments and creation, we also had quite a number of things that we did with results in changing the districting or zoning. I think the biggest one that we probably worked on was the Outlots. That was kind of a big one. That's on page three for the May 3rd. And also the rezoning of the property for the Caraval Adventures, which I think is also known as Nikhazi Hops, which the city and EDA were highly involved in. In other areas, we consider official requests such as building and zoning permit fees. We made a recommendation to ask the council to revisit the fees to make sure that they were in alignment with what they should be. We're also in discussion of the former annexation area because we think this is an opportunity to look at where we might grow as a city, whatever future brings, be it housing, industry, et cetera. Another highlight of the year just recently was in February, the council and EDA met in a joint session with the commission and made some recommendations and had some good discussion. We're also going to have a number of us attend an internet-based training. I'm expecting some of us have already participated in that. And that will help us understand better how land is used and how it should be created for zoning. Goals include administering a comprehensive plan as zoning requests, updating the zoning and subdivision code so that we can have a little more flexibility in drawing other commercial or industrial businesses to town, and reviewing requests for variances and rezoning, as well as implementing any strategies that come out of that discussion with comprehensive plan. Are there any questions?
I think the... one of the items or the item that the council has charged planning and zoning with recently was the reviewing properties that might be available for industrial park use. And I know I was at the last planning and zoning meeting and there was some good discussion on that, so...
Right.
We're looking forward...
We're using a pros and cons approach.
Yeah. Yeah. So, council looks forward to hearing back from you whenever a recommendation is ready.
Certainly. And we... I would also like to give special mention to Councilmember Batchor for being our liaison and bringing us the news of the council as well as transferring other information. All right.
I think through... Obviously, I've had some discussion with Cynthia and I... Yeah, I think the committee is doing a great job in terms of looking at industrial sites very thorough.
Thank you for mentioning her name because I did not give her special mention. She is...
Part of the team.
Yes, she's our consultant.
Questions for Jennifer?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Certainly.
All right, we'll move on to item 10, Resolutions or Ordinances and Resolutions.
Councilmembers, this is the next two items in terms of Resolution 35 and 36. Were carried over from our last council meeting. The reason for that is they're rather lengthy documents and are pertaining to an individual who may choose to put, in essence, a solar panel on their home and then wants to connect to the electrical system and sell back to the city. So, this was a recommendation that came from MMPA, who manages our electrical system. And at this time, both Ross as well as Kurt Court from MBEC have had a chance to review and I'll let Ross, if there's anything that you wanna say with regards to that.
Well, as the council is aware, society generally is trying to recruit alternative energy sources. And in order to encourage that, we have to give them some entree into our electric grid, and that's what this does. It's promoted by various levels of government. The MMPCA is... MMPA has provided us with these documents. And the items that I guess I was concerned about, I think are fine, the way they're worded. There are provisions for ensuring that if someone wants to hook onto our grid, it's done in a safe manner so as not to interfere with the functioning of our grid. And also, it's at the cost of the person or entity that wants to hook on, so there's no cost to the city in doing this. And there are provisions where we can, you know, detach that connection or cancel the agreement. So, I would recommend that the council consider approving it. I don't see any negatives and it is something, as they say, that higher levels of government are pushing very strongly.
Discussion?
I'll introduce Resolution 35-2019, Adopting the City of Arlington Electrical System Distribution Energy Resource Interconnection Process.
I'll second that.
Resolution 35-2019, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Hattlested, and it is a resolution adopting the City of Arlington Electrical System Distribution Energy Resource Interconnection Process. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlested.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 36-2019.
I'll introduce Resolution 36-2019, Adopting the City of Arlington Electrical System Policy Regarding Distributed Energy Resources and Net Metering and Rules Governing the Interconnection of Co... What's that?
Co-generation.
Co-generation in small power production facilities.
I'll second it.
Resolution 36-2019, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski, and that is a resolution adopting the City of Arlington Electrical Systems Policy Regarding Distributed Energy Resources and Net Metering and Rules Governing the Interconnection of Co-generation in Small Power Production Facilities. Is there discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlested.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
And Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, and one councilmember absent. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 37-2019. This is regarding a variance at 401 Westbrook Street.
Councilmembers, included in the packet that accompanied this, you have the application as well as a memo from... You have the application, you have the chapter 17 of the ordinance which applies to it, excuse me, as well as a memo from Cynthia Smith-Srack regarding the request. So, I believe we do have Jan here.
Jan.
Sorry, Jan.
Janie.
Janie. You would like to say something?
I would, please. Am I allowed to...
Yes, well, have a chair. Have a chair.
Clarification?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak. Few fences conjure up as many images of peaceful neighborhoods and happy families as the iconic picket fence, a classic style that is perfect for creating a boundary around your property and increasing the curb appeal of your home while keeping children and pets safe. This nostalgic image is exactly what I am proposing to secure my yard with the variance request of which you will be voting on. If you would please reference my site plan, you can clearly see that due to the placement of my house and garage on my corner lot, excuse me, the city's setback requirements do not allow me to fully use and enjoy my property as I desire and as I am proposing. I feel the fence and setback ordinance is overly restrictive and discriminatory of corner lot property owners. It prohibits me from protecting my grandchildren, myself, and my pets who have been threatened multiple times by loose neighborhood dogs. It prohibits me from protecting my dogs who have been sickened by the feces of strays and prohibits me from protecting my dogs against the potential risk of being poisoned from the pods of the Kentucky coffee tree that the city has planted in the boulevard on the east side of my property. The documents that you have before you indicate that the Planning Commission feels I have failed to demonstrate that the variance is necessitated by practical difficulties. I disagree. I cannot accomplish the objectives I just outlined for you with the restrictive nature of this ordinance due to the design of my property. That is the practical difficulty. The security of this fence is a necessity that will provide safety to my grandchildren as well as our pets and myself. Additionally, this fence will increase the value of my property, which in turn will increase my property taxes as well as add charm to the neighborhood. Please reference the sample photo of my proposed fence that is contained within your packet of information. It looks like this.
Okay, I've seen that picture before.
The Planning Commission is concerned that this three-foot picket fence with scallops up to four feet at each post will inhibit motorists used especially in low-profile vehicles. I disagree. The only motorists to consider are the eastbound Brook Street drivers who are controlled by a stop sign at the corner of Fourth Avenue and whose distance from my proposed fence is the entire westbound lane of the street plus an additional 12 feet of boulevard and sidewalk. Furthermore, the plan I am proposing results in a 28-foot site triangle, whereas only a 25-foot site triangle is required. Please see the revised site plan that I just handed out to you with the site triangle outlined. At the public hearing, a member of the Planning Commission took the stand that since this is the first fence variance request that the city has received and there are no other front yard fences within the city, the request should be denied. That is simply not true. Although I do not know if there have been other front yard fence variance requests made, I do know there are other front yard fences in Arlington. I realize they were potentially grandfathered in. Regardless, they do exist, one of which is a serious traffic hazard at the corner of First Avenue and Main Street. Actually, I'm quite perplexed at the fact that a portion of the fence ordinance is strictly upheld while other portions of it seem to be not regulated at all. The ordinance reads in part, Chapter 1703-F, "All fences already in existence at the date of enactment of this ordinance and all fences erected within the city hereafter shall be kept free of weeds and refuse, shall be maintained so as to avoid sagging, and shall be kept properly painted, stained, or rust-proof as appropriate for the material of which the fence is constructed. I strongly suggest you drive the streets of Arlington. This portion of the ordinance is most definitely not being enforced. There are numerous fences which are not in compliance." The second portion of my variance request, excuse me, is to move an existing 10-by-12 deck from the west side of my garage to the east side of my house where it will sit on existing concrete at ground level and it can be used and enjoyed. The reasons for denial expressed by the Planning Committee is that a similar variance request submitted by another resident was denied. However, it is my understanding that request was for a raised deck where the variance I am requesting is not. A member of the Planning Commission also stated that my deck would stick out way too far. You can see by this photo... You can see by this photo, I have provided where the deck will be placed. And the ten feet that will protrude from the foundation of my house actually comes right to this concrete, the edge of this concrete. Please notice the extension in correlation to the neighboring properties and how close the farthest edge will actually be to my house. Non-obtrusive, in my opinion. In regards to the variance request necessitated by practical difficulties, I disagree with the planning commission's opinion. The committee indicates that I somehow created the practical difficulty because I could reduce the size of my attached garage. How is that even logical and what purpose would that serve? The practical difficulty, in my opinion, is the same as for the fence. Due to the placement of my house and garage on my corner lot, the city's setback requirements regarding corner lots do not allow me to fully use and enjoy my property as I desire, a liberty that many other residents are allowed. The necessity of a deck may not be understandable to passersby or even desirable to others, but to me, having the opportunity to utilize and enjoy the structure in its entirety as opposed to its current unusable location is why I'm requesting this part of the variance. With hours spent combing Arlington's ordinances and publicly viewing numerous properties within the City of Arlington, it is apparent that there are alternative options to secure my yard, such as a perimeter garden around my entire lot protected from rabbits by chicken wire. Just to the south of my property is a front yard garden secured with a gnarly, wrinkled, extremely ugly chicken wire fence. Is there an ordinance prohibiting front and side yard gardens that are protected by chicken wire? Apparently not. Raised garden boxes around the perimeter of my entire lot. Recycled pallets work very well for this. Again, I was unable to locate an ordinance prohibiting raised garden boxes in front and side yards. Hedge, shrubs, vines with intertwining branches could easily be planted to provide security. I contacted Ms. Smith Strack regarding this option and she confirmed there is not an ordinance prohibiting hedge, shrubs, or vines around the perimeter of my lot, nor are there any height restrictions except in the event of public utilities. These three options would not provide the clean, inviting image to my yard and the neighborhood that a beautiful picket fence would and are definitely not the look and feel I want for my yard. Unfortunately, the city fence ordinance and setback requirements are ridiculously restrictive to the property owner's ability to create their desired space. And if my variance requests are denied, the city will force me to choose one of these undesirable alternatives as I will still be determined to secure my property. Also apparent, excuse me, is that landscaping is not regulated regarding front and side yard setbacks. So essentially, I could build a raised patio area from landscape blocks and pavers or poured concrete, much larger than a ten-by-twelve deck, much closer to the side property line, much more intrusive to the view of the property lines of Fourth Avenue, and that would be acceptable. This doesn't make sense to me. Landscape blocks and concrete that stick out way too far are visually intrusive and potentially can extend right up to the property line are allowed. But if a smaller space is made of wood and encroaches on a side yard setback, it is not allowed. To summarize, I am requesting that the City of Arlington carefully consider all documents, photos, and conversation that has been presented this evening regarding my request for a variance to build an attractive, appealing white picket fence around my property and to relocate an existing nonusable deck to a usable location. Both share the same practical difficulty necessitating the need for a variance. Due to the placement of my house and garage on my corner lot, the city's setback requirements do not allow me to fully use and enjoy my property as I desire, a liberty that many other residents are allowed. Neither the fence or the relocation of the deck would in any way alter the essential character of the locality, nor would either pose a hazard to motorists. Both would create attractive outdoor spaces, increasing the curb appeal of my property and adding charm to the neighborhood. Finally, I would like to reiterate the obvious truth that only a portion of the City of Arlington's fence ordinance is being enforced, the portion which prevents me from securing my property, not the entire ordinance. And that is far from right. Thank you for your time and careful and thoughtful consideration of my request.
Janie, was was all the information you shared with us this evening presented to the planning and zoning at their meeting?
No, because I was not aware of what their arguments or concerns were. So these are, these are actually my rebuttals to what their concerns, the concerns that they, that they brought up that evening. It would have been really helpful if one or more of them would have come out and visited so we could have talked about the, the plan, the project, what I was wanting to do, what I was looking at, you know, putting a tape to the areas and and actually understanding and, you know, viewing what was gonna hap- what I was hoping to happen where. I, I would have really appreciated that conversation and, and that interaction.
So as far as the planning commission, when we talked about this, there was, as you mentioned, about a year and a half, two years ago, as the deck portion, if we talk about the deck portion right now. That was a request that was made by another, another resident and they ended up narrowing their deck and still placing it where they wanted to, but within the, within the easement or within the guidelines, setbacks, thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, was that one raised off of the ground?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It was. It was a raised deck.
But deck nonetheless, I mean, I guess.
Right, I understand that. There, there's.
So and, and I guess that suggestion was brought up to you at the meeting too, if it would be possible if you just narrowed the deck just a little bit, so.
I mean, it would be possible to tear it apart and do that, however it is existing and, you know, it's, it's already built, it's just behind the garage, not being used from a previous owner. So and that's, you know, partially why I took, actually took this photo and brought it along, as you can see, 'cause it, the ten feet actually is right here to this concrete. So you can see that it's, it's not protruding way out in the sightline of any other properties or.
So the deck would, would just be replaced?
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually a raised, a little small raised portion of concrete right here that would come out and then this concrete would all be level and this timber bed would be removed. So the deck would start from the edge of the door and go to the north and sit right on this concrete that's currently there. And that's where the ten feet measures out to.
So the deck is cur- it's a wood deck?
It's a wood deck.
And it's, what is it sitting on right now?
Right now, it is on donuts and, um, actually, one end of it sits on top of landscaping and the other end does have some short posts that are sitting on concrete donuts. Um, the previous owner used it as a base for a dog kennel, so there's doors into, dog doors into the garage and there was a kennel on top of this structure.
So and I guess the reason why the planning and zoning went the way that they went with is because, um, uh, practical difficulties you need to the parcel. So we're just following, we're staying in between the lines and that's why, uh, this and as well as the fence, that's why, um, that's why we denied it. And yes, there are other fences in the community that are a hazard, I do have to say. But that was before.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, so.
I understand they were grandfathered in, but it's just stemming that if there's a and that's a hazard that maybe something could be done.
And there's more work that needs to be done as far as keeping places tidy. Just put on those.
Definitely.
All right, I, maybe I missed something. Michelle, you could maybe answer this for me. Why did they deny the deck where the existing concrete is now?
Um, what do you mean? It, it, it's the extension of the deck, it's, it's the setbacks. So how far out it goes? That's in the guid- that, that's in the, that's in the, in our ordinance, so.
You mean from the wa- the way there all the way to?
Out to that point.
Yeah, it's out to there.
Because of the setbacks, period. That's what we, what the Planning and Zoning Commission made their decision based on.
And that, what would the top of the deck?
It's, well, it's two-by-sixes, so it's, you know, seven, seven and a half, eight inches.
From ground.
From ground, yes.
So your door would still clear the deck?
Yes, yes, in fact, without that deck there, as you can see by this photo, there actually does need to be something. There was at one point, obviously, something here. That is a big step into the house.
It's a big step.
Sometime the step was there, in some sort of.
Personally, I have a hard time acting on this. I would, I would like to see it go back to committee with this additional information.
I would agree.
I, I think if, if this what we heard and saw tonight is not what the planning and zoning committee dealt with as far as evidence, so to speak, I, I think they need to hear the same thing, is what I'm saying. I'm not sure it would change our decision, but at least we're basing it on all the facts. But that's up to the council to decide.
I would agree we send it back. I, I, you know, I don't, I wanna be fair, but I don't wanna step on planning and zoning's toes. If they didn't have all this information when they made their decision, they probably should have. Now, they may not change their mind, but at least everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
'Cause right now, everybody isn't on the same page.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with the deck, but.
I don't either. I see no problem with that deck at all.
And I like the picket fence idea.
Yeah, I kinda do too. Can I make a motion to send this back to planning and zoning and have the same information presented there that was presented to us this evening?
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Haddelstedt, second by Councilmember Yashewski to refer back to the planning and zoning, the subjects of both Resolution thirty-seven dash twenty nineteen and thirty-eight dash twenty nineteen. You're gonna send them both back?
Yes.
I thought we were just talking about the deck.
I was talking both.
Okay.
I was thinking both.
I think there was additional information on both, wasn't there?
Yeah.
We heard more tonight than what.
Yes, absolutely. And like I said, you know, had, had we, somebody come out and actually had the conversation with me, I had no clue what they would be looking at, what they wouldn't be considering. I've, I've never been through this process before. Um, in fact, the application itself is confusing as to what kind of information you're really looking for or needing. So, no, I would be more than willing to have another conversation and, and clarify.
I would encourage, and I don't know how we can get this word to them, but I would certainly encourage some members of the planning and zoning to go out and view the subject property.
Absolutely.
Before they take a look at it again. Okay, motion by Haddelstedt, second by Yashewski to refer back to the planning and zoning commission, the subjects of the thirty-seven dash twenty nineteen and thirty-eight dash twenty nine, twenty nineteen resolutions. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, three vo- three votes in favor, one against, one absent. The res- or the motion passes and it'll be ref- refer it back to planning and zoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you want your papers back?
I don't think so.
No. Um, Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty nineteen approving a gambling permit for the Chamber of Commerce, which is purse bingo. I believe that's to be held during Arlydazzle.
Correct.
Okay.
December sixth of two thousand and nineteen.
I'll introduce thirty-nine dash twenty nineteen approving gambling permit for Chamber of Commerce, purse bingo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty nineteen is introduced by Councilmember Batchery, second by Councilmember Highland. Resolution is a, a resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for Arlington area Chamber of Commerce and that is for purse bingo to be held on December sixth, did you say? Yes, December sixth, in conjunction with the Arlydazzle. Is there discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. The resolution is adopted. Resolution forty dash twenty nineteen, and that is for a resolution for gambling permit for the Chamber of Commerce also, and that's for a raffle.
Wait, I'll introduce forty dash twenty nineteen approving the gambling permit for Chamber of Commerce raffle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution forty dash twenty nineteen introduced by Councilmember Batchery, second by Councilmember Highland, and that is a resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for Arlington Chamber of Commerce, and that is for a raffle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Highland.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. The resolution is adopted.
I'm not used to be called first.
Fooled ya. All right, moving on to item eleven, Northland Drying. Review of the report of ESI Engineering.
Councilmembers, included in your packet was the, uh, multiple-day noise testing that was conducted by ESI Engineering. This was requested of Northland Drying as a result of, of the preliminary tests that the City of Arlington did, finding that they were in violation of the MPCA noise ordinance. This was initially requested from them of May fifth and was just recently provided to the city. So you can see that testing and the report were completed on May twenty-fourth and attached in your packet were the results. Those results showed that at times the noise level did rise above the fifty threshold during the evening hours. A lot of notes were written there that perhaps would cause the higher level of noise was bird wind noise, train noise, uh, different things that were not related to Northland Drying. So as you can see, there was also a day in there, Wednesday, May eighth, when there was a lot of rain, which does have an impact on the noise. But you can see from your packet the results of that testing, basically confirming what Northland Drying has reported to the city that they are below the fifty decibel noise threshold.
Okay, comments, questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll move on. A change order for twenty nineteen Street and Utility Improvement Project.
Councilmembers, this is a, our first official change order for the two thousand nineteen Street Improvement Project. This is a reduction in cost. This is stemming from several changes, including the value engineering, which Jason Femrite came up with by using a combination of the cement as well as the poly piping for the storm, stormwater piping, using a lower quality oil. as the poly piping for the storm, stormwater piping, uh, using a lower quality oil, which still is sufficient for what we're looking for, and also some changes to the, uh, uh, topsoil, uh, that resulted in about a sixty-five thousand dollar change. In addition, the sidewalk was removed from the project, and that was about eighty-eight thousand. Um, so the total amount of decrease then comes to a hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Just looking for your approval to go ahead and authorize that change.
Questions? Excuse me, questions? And entertain a motion to move ahead with that change order.
I'll make a motion to approve change order for twenty nineteen Street Utility Improvement Project.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hattlestead, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to, uh, approve the change order for the twenty nineteen Street and Utility Improvement Project, uh, totaling one hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried.
Councilmembers, we're happy to let you know that, uh, we received confirmation from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation that the, uh, City of Arlington was awarded twenty thousand dollars for the Entrepreneurs, Learners, and More on Main Street. So, uh, Kurt Make, who's in the audience, uh, uh, worked on this along with, uh, some other individuals from the Choose Arlington program, and, uh, this basically is the grant commitment, which has been reviewed by the, uh, city attorney, and so, um, just, uh, looking for authorization to go ahead and, uh, have the mayor sign the agreement.
And, uh, what length of time does the, do we have for the grant monies to be utilized? There usually is a deadline and a final report.
Uh, grant period is July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
A year, all right.
I'll make a motion to, um, have the, is it the mayor authorize signature, uh, on the Southwest Minnesota Initiative Foundation Grant Commitment of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to authorize the mayor's signature on a, uh, grant document from the Sou- Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation Grant Commitment, and that amount is twenty thousand dollars. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, the, uh, item of new business was scratched, item fourteen, then we'll move on to miscellaneous business, Councilmember Committee updates. Is there any, are there any? Hearing none.
I would just like to.
Yeah.
It's nobody else does. I would just like to give you a quick update. Uh, I've been attending the MMPA board meeting, uh, meetings. We've had a number of different issues that we've talked about. I'm gonna hit up upon a few here, and I also read recently in the newspaper, there was a letter to the editor that brought up, um, an issue that we've been talking about with regards to our, uh, wind turbine here. Um, so our wind turbine hasn't been, uh, functioning lately. A lot of the wind turbines that, uh, we got through MMPA, uh, have been kind of refurbished ones, and they have gone through their, their natural life. Uh, MMP was taking a look at options, uh, in terms of what they could do. They took a look at totally replacing and putting up a new, um, wind turbine, and they also took a look at refurbishing. Co- the results came back that they can find some good equipment and refurbish them. Those will probably be done over the course of the next six months, um, but that is why it's not running currently. Uh, you know, it's done, I believe, from our discussions with MMP, it's done more, it's more symbolic than it is really creating a lot of, uh, electricity, but that's something that they feel is important, and all the member communities have a wind turbine such as Arlington has, uh, to kinda show their, their commitment to renewable, uh, energy. At our last meeting, there was discussion about them granting a right-of-way agreement for La Sure County, who is putting an expansion of one twelve between, uh, La Sure and La Center. Uh, the board was informed that the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission approved MMP's two thousand nineteen through two thousand thirty-three Integrated Resource Plan. Uh, that will be revisited again in August of, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, they also talked about a significant number of renewable projects that they are pursuing. And lastly, we reviewed the, uh, Clean Energy Choice Program, which is available to all member communities, and we currently, as a collective whole, have a market penetration that is now at three point two percent. So individuals have a choice on their electrical bill to choose to use a hundred percent, uh, renewable energies. So, uh, that was a brief summary of our, of our last meeting, and if you receive any questions about the, uh, wind turbine, hopefully you can share that it's, it's being worked on, and it will be up and turning again soon.
How long has it been in place, the wind turbine?
Ten years?
Ten?
That's a yes.
I was thinking it was longer than that, but.
I think they were bought used from Europe.
Is that right?
Yep.
Uh, that didn't need them anymore because they were inefficient.
Yeah.
Well, we got them.
We got them.
And now it's still inefficient.
But.
And it's still inefficient.
Apparently so.
An- another issue that I'd like to bring up for, to the council, um, so as I had mentioned earlier, there is a conflict we had selected July, uh, twenty-third for having our Ben Winchester presentation. Uh, it was after that decision had been made that we realized that MMP is having their annual meeting that same evening. My question is, we received some additional dates from Ben Winchester, uh, August sixth, seventh, or twentieth. Would the council be interested in rescheduling July twenty-third?
Sixth is a and o.
Have MMPA change their.
Arlington night out.
Okay, can't do it then. The other dates are the seventh or the twentieth?
The seventh or the twentieth, correct.
Well, the tw- nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first is the MM, the MMPA or MMUA contents up in Gracie Point.
But do we have anybody going there?
Well, I was considering.
Oh, okay, that's, that's why I asked the question, Michelle.
I was considering, I haven't decided yet, but I was considering.
If we didn't have anybody going, it wasn't going to be a concern.
Yeah.
At the same time, could you just mention to the council members about maybe the importance of being at the MMPA?
Yep, there's.
Function on the twenty-third?
There's a possibility that we may be working more closely with, uh, with Abant Energy in the future, so, um, that's where I thought this might be beneficial for council members. Uh, also, the EDA director has been invited, uh, from all of the participating communities, so.
And this is a, the, this is their annual meeting, it's at Chaska Event Center, I believe?
Yeah.
Correct.
On the twenty-third.
Right.
So the seventh or the twentieth of August is what we're.
Seventh, do the seventh.
Uh, twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, seventh or the twentieth.
After.
Is there a way that we can record it?
Um.
Can we reach out to somebody to record it?
We can certainly ask if he will allow us to do that. Um, yes, and we're.
Or even have these, like, in-house, so in case somebody misses it, 'cause I have a feeling that I.
Yep. I will make a note, and we will inquire with him.
Preference on either the seventh or the twentieth?
Sooner the better.
Either one works for me, Tom?
Either for me.
Ben?
I'm pulling my.
And we will be inviting, um, neighboring communities, we will be reaching out to large numbers.
I would say that.
And hosting here at the.
The other days.
Are you saying the public will be invited, or?
Correct.
Or other?
They're still later.
Seven through the public.
Okay.
Of August.
Twentieth is a.
Either.
Either or?
Either.
Might not be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, either one.
So don't go probably.
Yeah, I.
It might be bad for both.
Anything, we don't know, is there anything else going on in the, it's a Wednesday night?
Yep.
On the seventh?
Wednesday is the seventh, and the twentieth would be.
Twentieth is a Tuesday.
You're right, twentieth is Tuesday. So I guess either one works.
Seventh or the twentieth?
Mr. Highland said as sooner the better, so that would be the seventh, I suppose.
I'll second.
I'll shoot for the seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, we'll try and get that scheduled, and hopefully nothing else will.
Is it MMP?
MM, MMPA.
Or MMUA.
No, what you're doing is you're, uh, what's his name, that we're rescheduling?
Ben Winchester.
Oh, Winchester.
He's with the University of.
Winchester is gonna be August seventh. Uh, has anyone done the online training, the land use thing yet, anybody?
No.
Okay. I, we received all the information, I think, so, I haven't done it either.
I had a busy weekend, did you send me a copy?
Yeah, I know, we.
I will, I will do it tomorrow, then I'll call you to have you verified that you've received it.
Okay.
So.
All right, any other discussion items? Hearing none, motion is in order to adjourn.
I'll make.
Motion by Councilmember Hattlestead, second by Councilmember Batchor, adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting is adjourned at? I can't read my watch clock here.
I was.
Oh, eight thirty-two.
Michelle? Tom? Um, I just, is that off?
Is this off?
No.